Vehicles in traffic. Basically has to do with putting in a handicapped parking space at 333 East Minor and also 507 Bernard Street. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Mr. Vice President, would you like me to read through the exhibits we have for the hearing?
Sure, why not? I don't need.
Good evening. This is a public hearing for an ordinance for the Borough of Westchester, amending the code of Borough of Westchester, specifically Chapter 104, titled Vehicles in Traffic. That's Section 104-45, to add handicap parking spaces to 333 East Minor Street and 507 East Barnard Street. For the record, I'd like to enter in Exhibits BC-1, which is a proof of publication of this ordinance in the Daily Local News on August 3, 2021, and Board Exhibit Number 2, an email dated July 23, 2021, from Wendy Gavin to Chester County Law Library, providing proposed amendment for public inspection at the same. Generally speaking, this is a process the Borough engages in quite frequently to add handicap parking spaces. These are spaces where vehicles can be parked at, and they need to display a state-issued handicap parking placard in order to park there. These spaces are not allocated to individuals, they're just permitted for use of persons with these handicap placards. The Borough does, from time to time, go back and make sure these are still being used, and does retire these spaces as the persons who are using them move out of the neighborhood. These spaces are established by ordinance, and that is the reason for tonight's hearing. At this point in time, are there any questions from members of council? Hearing none, are there any questions on this matter from the public? Seeing none, this ordinance is now in a position to be voted on by Borough Council.
I have a motion. Any questions, please? Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn? Motion carries for zero. Thank you. Next, we're going to begin the regular council work session. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Dorsey. Thank you. Item number three, comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. Have anything? Mr. Hudson?
Hi, my name is Kyle Hudson from 524 West Marshall Street. I just wanted to bring to your attention the rising COVID numbers. I was at the Public Safety Meeting earlier this month, and it wasn't discussed at all. Just to give you an update, in the last seven days, there have been 597 confirmed COVID infections, compared to the end of last month, the week of, the last week of July, which was 139. That is a 232% increase. When the last time, or when the pandemic was beginning and cases were rising, we would be right now, our numbers would be reflective around April 13. And at that point, we were in full shutdown mode, mask mandates, virtual meetings, the whole nine yards. I don't think it needs to be as extreme, but because deaths are not tracking the same way they were last time, that's probably because we know how to handle it, we've better handled, people are vaccinated. But I would like to see the Borough actually put in some preventative measures to help us mitigate the spread of COVID-19. I have a couple suggestions. I think reinstating the mask mandate in town is something real low-hanging fruit that could help us easily mitigate the spread. I think returning to virtual meetings until we get back out of the orange phase. The county grades COVID in four degrees, green, yellow, orange, red. Currently, we are in orange. I'd like to see council meetings return to virtual until we are back out of that. When we had the rise in COVID last time, we had Gay Street open, and there we also had hand-sinetizing stations. I'd like to see those returned. And I'd also like to see Borough Council ask, not mandate, ask the businesses in town to limit their occupancy inside. I think we all went through this song and dance a year ago, people are going to comply, or they're not. But I think that asking, you know, you catch more flies with honey than vinegar. So right now, infections are rising. Westchester is the main commercial and social hub in Chester County. We have the biggest impact. What we do here affects the entire county. And so I ask Borough Council tonight, or tomorrow night, to institute some of the policies that I laid out. Thank you.
Start off, anyone have any comments on that? Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions?
You know, Don, this would be a good time for me to maybe talk to council about new state law on procedures or things that are not on your agenda. So part of our home, or shorter, requires item number three to be on our agendas, that's fine. But in the future, actually effective August 29, any item that is not on our agenda previous to tonight cannot be discussed tonight unless Borough Council makes a motion to amend the agenda, and it's limited to emergencies, things that will have no fiscal impact on the borough. So everything else we do in compliance with state law currently, except we have to put a post of the meeting agenda outside of the meeting room. This goes, not just for council meetings, it goes for all committee meetings, all of the staff's committee meetings, zoning hearing board, planning commission, rec commission, who else we got? On and on and on. So all these, all of our boards and commissions are going to follow the same rules. So that's, Kyle just kind of set the table perfectly, saying, this is exactly what you can't discuss tonight, okay? But you can say, we'll put it on an agenda tomorrow night, or a future agenda, and that's more than appropriate, okay? Any questions? Thanks. So I got a lot of meetings and... I think, well, no, I think that's what the state law is trying to do. The state law is trying to provide the public with information on items that will be discussed at a public meeting. So if they're interested, they can participate. Look, you can put that automatically, but it's not specific to the item to be discussed. You can bring that up and say you want to change the agenda. That's, that would be one motion, and then you have to do something else to get that item on the agenda. I'll send you, I'll, I'll send you the new state law, okay?
So the procedure would be, if we chose to, would be to amend the agenda? So, oh, that's better. So we could amend the agenda for this evening if we chose to, or put it off to whenever?
Yes. Reason behind the law is, want to inform the public about what you're going to be speaking about. Tonight's meeting, tomorrow night's meeting. So when you move to amend the agenda, make surprise some people. My advice, unless it's an emergency, I would just wait to the following week or month. If it affects the financials, it's got to go on the next agenda. Yeah, if it has financial implications, that has to go on the next agenda.
Extensive healthcare background notwithstanding, I'm not in favor of amending this this evening. If it's something that... Well, we possibly could bring it up next month at the Public Safety Meeting, for lack of a better one. How do the others feel?
Yeah, I would suggest we add it to Public Safety next month.
Okay, we'll do that. We don't have to have a vote on that, do we? All right, so we'll put that, I guess, on the Public Safety Committee for this month. Anyone else have any other business to discuss? Item number four, approve the recommendation from the Westchester Borough, Westchester Business Improvement District to appoint Scott Zuckin to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors.
I could take that for you, Mr. Braceley. Our recent bid meeting on Tuesday morning last week, we, Scott Zuckin has graciously asked to join the bid board, and the bid board approved Scott to be on the committee, since he's been in the borough and also in the Business District, basically his entire life. It was a natural fit for him to be part of it. You just saw the list of buildings that he actually owns. The organization owns as well. It would benefit the bid organization to have Mr. Zuckin on the...
Yeah, okay.
I have no, I have a question. I have no problem, Scott. I think it's a great fit as well. But this, just for procedurally, is this the bid recommending this person? Okay, yeah, okay. No, I'm consent to this.
Consent.
Consent, okay. Consent on item number four? Yes. Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from people in the meeting? All right, once again, that goes on the consent agenda. Item number five, approve an enforcement date of January 1, 2022, prohibiting the use of single-use plastic bags and plastic straws, similar to Chapter 81, Plastic Bag and Plastic Straw Regulations.
Oh, hi. Good evening. Will Williams, Sustainability Director. Before us is a letter from the Sustainability Advisory Committee suggesting a January 1 enforcement date for the single-use plastic ordinance. That date has also been recommended by the bid. In my opinion, the date allows ample time to re-educate businesses, residents, visitors, about the ordinance, as well as it allows the businesses to use up inventory of any products that they won't be able to distribute once the ordinance is in effect. So it's my opinion that this is a great date to run with.
I have a question. I think it was last week, Mr. Peron mentioned, like, kitchen trash bags and black trash bags, they're single-use. Is that covered by this?
Nope, it's only a distribution of bags beneath a certain thickness. Straws is really the only two products that are affected here. It's distribution by businesses.
Okay. Any comments?
Just have a question for Mr. Williams. What are some of the steps that we're taking to educate the businesses and alternatives that we're giving them?
Yeah, it's a good question. So when we were rolling this out initially, we were, initial date was January 2, 2020. Had a whole education plan, and as you can imagine, that gathered a little dust last year, but we're dusting it off. I met with John O'Brien from the bid, who's here tonight, and we talked about the best ways to do that. We have all sorts of materials, you know, printed, electronic, leveraging all of our electronic mediums, the website, social media. The bid is going to be a great ally here. We talked about doing a central sort of education event for the business community, realizing those are sometimes tough to pull together. So we'll also have to do some door-to-door outreach, and that's where our Sustainability Committee comes in really handy. Six willing volunteers who are passionate about this issue to help us make sure every owner and manager gets the point of contact they need to understand the ordinance and the sort of implications for their business. But, you know, again, I think this is, this gives us plenty of time to do that, most importantly.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Any questions or comments from people in the audience? So on the consent agenda? Item five will go on the consent agenda. Item number six, approve deleting paragraph number four, section 305, from the Westchester Borough Personnel Policy to accruing vacation and sick time while on military leave.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Armstead. I'm Director of Human Resources. And the military leave came to our attention via Chief Moorhead. He had some questions about military leave. And in talking with him, we reviewed the policy, which currently allows for anyone on military leave to accrue vacation personal and sick time. So I went to the internet and talked to our attorneys to see, you know, the legalities, excuse me, involved in that. And federal law requires that we certainly allow them to have the time off, that we don't discriminate against anybody on military leave, that we provide medical benefits for them, and that their position is available to them when they return from leave. But it doesn't entitle or make them eligible to accrue vacation, personal or sick time, while they're gone. So with that, we looked at other unpaid time, which family medical leave is unpaid time. If a person is sick, or if they're caring for a family member who's ill, they have up to 12 weeks of time during the year to be off, but it's unpaid time. But again, you know, their medical benefits are covered, they come back to the same job, et cetera. So I think what we have to consider, certainly we support our, you know, our employees that are, you know, going out on military leave. It certainly is a help to all of us as citizens of the United States. At the same time, when we're looking at the borough, and we're looking at our numbers, and we're looking at our budgets, we have to remember that when this person is gone, that department has to compensate for that loss, because we have tight numbers. So, you know, somebody may have to work overtime, whatever has to happen to, you know, to compensate for that person being gone. Now, if that person is gone for, you know, close to a year, whatever the timeframe is, and then comes back, and in addition to being gone, has accrued three, four, five weeks vacation, that's more time off, and that's more, that's, you know, that can be changing for us. So again, we're doing everything that we're asked to do legally and, you know, by federal law, to, you know, afford them that time off. And again, we appreciate that. But from a borough perspective, we would like to have that part removed, that they're accruing that time while they're gone, just like we do for family medical leave. They don't accrue time when they're away on family medical leave. Questions?
I have a question. Now, those people that are going out on military leave, they're not forced to use any time, right? They don't have to use sick time up to a certain point or anything, right?
No, not for military leave, no. No, if they want to use it prior to leaving, they can do that. But while they're out, all of the time that they've accrued remains in their bank, and then when they come back, they begin accruing time again. It's just that they wouldn't be accruing time while they're gone.
Got it.
I like that there's consistency across the system with this. Any questions or comments from? Any questions or comments from people in the audience? Consent?
Consent.
Consent, okay. Item number six will go on the consent agenda. Thanks, Karen. Okay, item number seven. Approve the request from the Westchester Business Improvement District to apply for a grant for Big Belly Trashcan Wraps. Westchester Business Improvement District will cover all costs, and Borough Council will have final approval of all art designs. This is something we've done, yes? It's a pretty straightforward thing, actually, just to liven up the Big Belly Trashcans, not works of art as they sit there now. Any questions, comments, anyone, anyone in the audience?
Again, this worked its way through the bid organization in downtown, and Mr. O'Brien is in the forefront of running this. We're waiting for the grant. Grant comes through, then we will do it. The nice thing about the Big Bellies being wrapped is that the tag artists or the vandals leave them alone, because it's showing art, and they respect each other's art. So it's very little graffiti removal from any of the Big Bellies that we have. And in addition to that, the community service people through Judge Vito and Mr. O'Brien, they have been washing the Big Bellies almost once a week now to keep them free of dirt and debris. They scrub up real nice.
And a number of them are already wrapped, right? So this is just getting more of them, Don.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments from people? Consent? Consent. Item number seven is going on the consent agenda. Item number eight, approve the purchase of a street sweeper at approximate cost of $260,000, and approve the repair of the 2016 street sweeper at an approximate cost of $11,000 using American Rescue Plan funds. Mr. Venatelli?
Hello, Al Venatelli, Director of Public Works. We're asking to repair the existing 2016 sweeper, which has been down for about seven or eight weeks now, and the cost is roughly $11,000 to have those repairs done. And also, we have a 2007 sweeper that has been out of operation for close to three months, probably about 10 to 12 months at this point, or 10 to 12 weeks, I should say. And the cost of replacing that sweeper is $260,000.
What, if approved, what would happen to the 2007 sweeper?
I'm sorry?
What would happen to the 2007 sweeper if this were?
That would get repurposed. The engine is fine and that, turn it into a vacuum truck to pick up leaves and vacuum out lots and things like that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council?
This says coming out of using American Rescue Plan Act funds. Is that for both of these items, or just the repair? Both, okay.
Both.
Questions? Any comments or questions from people in the audience? Consent agenda? Okay, item number eight goes on the consent agenda. Item number nine, authorize leasing a Ford F-550 dump body truck at an approximate annual cost of $13,656.
We've had a Ford F-550 dump truck that's been down for several months now and needs a new engine. I believe the cost is between $15,000 and $20,000. I think it's a 10 to 12-year-old truck. So we're looking at replacing that. There is several options. The option that's on the board right now is for leasing the vehicle through enterprise leasing. That would require a $26,000 upfront cost for the upfitting that vehicle. The other, I have a couple other options. Did a comparison with the cash purchase, an enterprise lease, and a conventional bank lease. With the conventional bank lease, we would not have to put any money upfront. The monthly cost would go up roughly $500 a month. And the $26,000 is basically spread throughout the five-year lease. And at the end of the lease, then there's a $1 buyout, which we can just keep the vehicle for longer if we want to. That's my preferred method.
Mr. Brace?
Mr. Smith? Again, it comes back to financing. In consultation with the, with Barbara Leonti and Mr. Peron, at this particular time, because of the situation that we have with cash being strapped as we are sitting here, we don't recommend us moving forward at this particular time for the F-550, because the outlay of cash is not there right now. We had some money came in for the sale of other items, about $16,000, and that's going to have to be used for other purposes. And unfortunately, at this particular time, we're not in a position to be able to move forward at this, with this unit. It's too expensive.
What's the impact, what's the impact if we don't make this purchase now? What's the impact if we don't make this purchase now? Won't we be able to provide?
That's really going to put us behind when the, for snow plowing. Had six large plow vehicles, we're down to four right now, so we're down a third of our fleet for large plow vehicles. So it'll increase costs, as far as we're going to have to bring in an outside contractor to help us plow snow throughout the whole winter, until something else is purchased.
What would be the cost of the outside contractor? Any idea?
I don't remember. I don't know what we've total was for '21.
But the, we're three, four months away from snow plowing. So I think, you know, we can revisit this in a couple months, and maybe we'll get a clearer financial picture of where we are. Just hold off then, talk about it down the road a little bit.
I'm comfortable with it.
It's fine with me.
Okay. Let's do that, we'll revisit this. Let's just make sure we don't forget. All right, I know. Thanks. Any comments from people in the audience? I should have asked that first. Okay, thank you. Item number 10, approve the sale of a Ford Explorer police training vehicle. This is a bid, this is something we do on a regular basis with vehicles that, for one reason or another, outlets of usefulness. I have no trouble with this one. Basically, the vehicles go up for auction. It's a state sponsor.
If I could, I'd like to amend that and add the Ford F-550 that's, that is off, that is not, that has a bad engine, and add that to the list, and try to sell that, maybe use those funds in the future. use those funds in the future toward the new one.
I don't have any problem with it. It's fine. So can we put number 10 on the consent agenda with that addition? Okay. Item number 11, enter contract with Letch Minnick Incorporated for site work and stormwater management facilities for the Everheart Park Improvement Project at a cost of $184,871, $184,871 and approved funding of $230,000 using American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Hello, Keith Karaski, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. The ask is twofold. At last week's Public Works Committee, the committee agreed to support the, or to approve the bid of $185,000 for the site work contract. But the actual ask was for the full $230,000 from the American Rescue Plan for the support in the, for the support in full of the entire project. It's not, it's not 185 plus 230, it's 230 total.
So, Mr. Perron, maybe I'm confused, but I thought we talked about this last week. And the American Rescue Plan funds could not be used because of the date.
Now, the, anything after March 4th, 3rd of 2021 until now and in the future, that money, you can use the money for those projects. Can't use stuff that was prior to that. On the screen, you'll see a couple columns. You'll see expenses, you'll see the revenues. You can see we're, we're a little short on some of the grant money, a little underestimating the site work. That was budgeted at 150. So at the end of the day, we need that 230 because the ARPA, that's the funding source we're asking for.
Any questions, comments?
I do have a question because last week, there was also mention of $130,000 that the borough had committed to this project.
Yeah, that, yeah, that 130 was in the capital, capital plan. If we don't use that money, that will boost up our general fund where we're lacking funds. So we could use this money in place of that. Not use that 130, we can use that elsewhere or carry it over to next year's budget. There's a couple, there's a couple different buckets in, when we do our borough finance. We have a general fund that pays for most of our capital projects, except for sewer projects, stream protection fee projects, and parking projects. They come out of those designated buckets.
Is this one of the capital projects that we removed from the budget last year?
No, no, we didn't remove. We put 130,000 in just in case there were some shortfalls and the borough had to make up funds or we had to pay money upfront before we got grant money back. The expectation, according to Keith, when he presented this last year, was that, you know, we weren't really going to need to use that money, hopefully. Hopefully it didn't work out so well because we didn't get all the grant money we anticipated. But we got close. It's a $688,000 project. It's going to be spectacular. So philosophically, I think we're better off not using general fund dollars when we have other dollars we can use from another bucket, which is that federal funds.
So of that, that American Rescue Plan Act, we've now allocated, of that million dollars, we've now allocated over half of it, correct?
Under half.
Well, if I add 271 and 230, I get half a million dollars.
We get 1.1, Barb? Yeah, we got 1.1, so.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any comments, questions? Consent agenda?
Consent.
Consent. Item number 11 will go on the consent agenda. Parking next. Item 12, enter into an agreement with Imperial Parking LLC for management of the bicentennial and Chestnut Street garages and lots. Number six, number nine, and number 10, for the term September 1st to 2020 through August 31st, 2022. It's a 39-page attachment. This is a lot of any, anything further when you don't?
Thank you. Yeah, we discussed this in committee. Inpark or Reef Parking, depending on who's emailing you from the company, they're both the same company, has been in a relationship now since 2018 to Madden and Chestnut Street garages. This is an extension of that annual agreement. It expires around the end of August each year. The management fees aren't changing and Inpark and Reef provide most of the day-to-day management of transactions, monthly permit sales, janitorial services, landscaping, security. They interface well with the police. They call the elevator repair company when something goes down, troubleshoot, fire alarms when they go off, and they're helping us co-manage our capital projects as well. So we, it's a partnership that has worked out pretty well in my seven months here. And this is a one-year extension at no increase of the existing management fees, which are roughly $16,000 per garage. So about $32,000 total for them.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the council? Any comments, questions from members of the audience? Generally, for the most part, if I'm not mistaken, had reasonably good success with this company. Put that on the consent? Consent. Item number 12 will go on the consent agenda. Item number 13, enter into an agreement with Passport Labs Incorporated for pay-by-phone services.
Thank you. This is a proposal for services with Passport, which is a company we already do business with. But when I investigated, you know, our existing licenses and agreements with our sales and service people with the organizations the parking department deals with, I discovered there was no executed agreement. So this is just to memorialize what we're already doing with Passport. Passport provides pay-by-phone services for persons parking at our single space meters in town. There's about 600 of those meters. Overall, transactional volume is anywhere from 5% to 10%, depending on what neighborhood the meter's in. Most people pay by credit card at our single space meters, about two-thirds pay by credit card, and remainders with coin. It's, it's a more expensive way for the user to pay for their parking. There's a 25-cent supercharge passed on to the user, and we pay on our, the receiving end, a 2.9% fee on revenue, kind of like a credit card company. So it's a little pricey way to pay for parking, but it's really convenient. It's a great way to put more virtual coins in your meter when you can't run back to the meter and slip your card or another coin in the meter. So this is just to addify what we're already doing with Passport.
Any comments, questions? Comments, questions from members of the audience? Consent? I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I have a quick question. How was the agreement coming to place if there's no agreement? Like if we're, like, how did this start if there wasn't an original agreement?
I don't know the answer to that.
How about, you have no idea how we started spending money and how we took on a vendor? No idea? Thank you.
Consent agenda, everybody? Item number 13 will go on the consent agenda. Item number 14, enter into contract with Hudek Infrastructure for structural repairs to the bicentennial garage at a cost of $341,985 and consider the $14,000 sod alternate.
Thank you. This is one of our major capital projects for 2021 in the parking department. There were two major garage repair projects. This is the second one. We are starting the work on Chestnut Street this week. And the proposal here is to accept a bid for work at bicentennial garage. In our budget that's available online, this is called bicentennial garage roof repair, and $300,000 was budgeted for this work. It's not necessarily roof repair. It's going around the garage and fixing places where the concrete has deteriorated to prevent further corrosion of the steel that supports the reinforced concrete. The bicentennial garage is a post-tension poured-in-place concrete structure, which I learned a lot about talking with the engineers. I'm not an expert or a structural engineer, but it's very important with this garage and both our garages to make sure you don't get water intruding into the, the concrete decks where it could corrode the steel and cause bigger problems down the road. So a lot of this work is repairing damage, placing the elastic sealant that goes between the concrete members. And that's basically the bulk, the bulk of the work on all levels of the garage. It came in a little over budget, as you can see. This is the low bidder. They're a qualified bidder. If the name's familiar, that's because they're doing the work at Chestnut Street for us as well. So that's a good sign. We'll have the same contractor coordinating with our parking team at both garages. So this, because the cost is a little over budget, it's created kind of a domino effect in my thinking proposals for spending in 2021 in the capital plan. We have a little bit of flexibility with our meter upgrade that we're doing. If you recall, we're swapping our meter technology. It's in, right now, your single space meters are using a wireless technology that's going to sunset at the end of 2022. Need to swap that out and have it all swapped by the end of 2022. So we're going to do fewer of the meters this year and more of them next year so that we can get the whole parking department's capital projects that council had budgeted for in at your budget number, even though this particular project in that portfolio for is a little over budget. And lastly, there is a discussion that the committee wanted to have with the rest of council about whether to award one of the alternates, which is to clean the facade of the building. Price there was $14,000 to, to clean the facade. So, Mr. Flynn, I think you had some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I did. The, if you look at the, the work that's being done from 1 to down to 6.1, the, all the caulking that's in between the, in between all the concrete slabs, between the elevators, any spalling concrete, it makes sense at this point, since they're going to be causing a lot of dust, because they're going to be doing some grinding, because you just can't tear out, you know, the backing rod, you can't tear out the old caulk. It's more than just the caulk that we use in our house. It's extremely rubbery and very stiff, or could be very brittle. It depends on what the condition it's in. So there's going to be a lot of residual dust flying around. And it makes sense at this particular time since we're going to be coating the top of each of, of the parking garage. The coping on the top of the parking garage is with Elastomeric coating, which is a flexible waterproof coating. It makes sense at this particular time, in my opinion, power wash the outside of the building to get all the grime from cars, the acid rain off of it and the soot. And then at that particular time, seal it with a clear sealer or Elastomeric coating so it's protected. Once that starts to fail, it's going to cost us a lot more money, $14,000 to repair it. And they're doing the work there anyway, so you might as well just finish it and get it done.
This is one of those things, we have to do it anyway. Questions, people in the audience? Consent, everyone? Thank you. Yes, thank you for that clarification. Item number 15, enter into amendment number five of the agreement with the county of Chester to lease up to 60 parking spaces at the Chestnut Street garage at a rate of $90 per month per space for the term of September 1st, 2021, and 31st, 2022.
Thank you. This, this is called amendment number five because it would be the fifth year in a row that the borough in Chester County entered into this agreement. There are 689 spaces in the garage at Chestnut Street, and there's plenty of room. And those spaces can be rented for $1.50 an hour by anybody who wants to come to our garage, and it's free on Sunday. But we do sell monthly passes in a limited supply because those monthly passes are actually cheaper than we pay at $1.50 an hour. So these 60 spaces are the daytime variety passes, which I believe, I keep misremembering the times of day, but it's geared towards office worker or persons who are employed during the day, not necessarily in offices. And doesn't mean you can't park earlier or later in the evening, but if you are there after nine o'clock, you start paying $1.50 an hour for your parking space and get billed back to the owner of the, of the permit. So this is a, this is neutral to the quantity of spaces that the Chester County is requesting, and it is at the rate that any other purchaser of day permits pays for in the borough.
And this, I think I asked this once before. This is first come, first served, or there's no assigned area, is that correct?
There's no assigned area. There are a limited number of monthly permits sold because we want there to be availability in the rest of the park and garage for transient users who pay more for the space. Yeah.
Simple enough. Questions, comments? Questions, comments? Mr. Khan?
Hi, Khan. Sean, I just wanted to ask, we own a lot of office buildings in town, and obviously, pre-COVID, a lot of those tenants had monthly passes. Now they're being told that they can't get monthly passes. They have to get daily passes at $9 a day. So let's say $9 for 22 days, that's a lot more than the, than the...
It's twice as much.
Twice as much, right. So it's, in a, in a post-COVID world, or if there is such a thing, or as people start coming back to occupy office space, which benefits a lot of the retailers and restaurants and other businesses in town, will those people be, will those, some of those companies be allowed to get monthly spaces? And, you know, if that's not the case, why are we giving the county the preferential treatment over other businesses in town?
I agree with most of everything you just said. The, there is a waiting list right now for the garage monthly permits, and we have oversold. Typically, it's, the practice is to oversell the amount of permits because you never have everybody at once parking there every day. So there's a strategy and a science around how many monthly permits you want to sell because you want to keep a certain portion of the garage open for your transient users. So I, this issue came up at the parking committee meeting. I don't have a solution to discuss tonight, but we're looking at it because it seems a little counterintuitive to me to tell people we don't have availability and the garage is only 35, 36% occupied currently with cars, right?
Understood. Understood.
Yeah, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to keep turning people away. It also doesn't make a lot of sense to sell all your parking at half price. So there has to be a happy medium here, and we have to be able to gauge what's going to happen. I think the next four months are going to be real critical to solving this problem, because with the return of students to borough, the. Population on the ground is going to look and feel and change and be a lot differently, hopefully a lot more active, a lot more people in town. We're going to look real hard at our occupancy numbers, our revenue numbers, and maybe by the next parking committee meeting, which is soon, I think it's on the seventh of September, I'll have more information for the committee about. Are we doing, are we managing those monthly permits correctly? And, and there may still be a waiting list, but.
I would just suggest that a lot of these companies, again, pre-COVID, had monthly passes, and now they're calling for monthly passes, and they're being told they don't exist. There's a waiting list. But you can pay double the price to park on a daily basis. So they're already kind of struggling through the COVID thing, and they had these monthly spaces. So it's been a nightmare for us, just from a management perspective, to try to explain. What's going on and. Why there aren't any available. And, you know.
There's available parking. I want to be very clear. There's available parking in both garages at a dollar fifty an hour.
Right. It's just for, you know, for a business, you know, if somebody is going to an office and you're trying to bring people back into the borough for office space use. That's not economical, especially when they were paying eighty or ninety bucks pre-COVID. So I just ask the council to consider that at some point.
Thank you. In the back, come on up.
John O'Brien, Executive Director, Westchester Business Improvement District. I just want to back up what Mr. Khan was saying, the bid. We've been fielding calls nonstop. And one thing I think council and for borough management might want to consider, we've also oddly been getting a lot of calls from parents of Westchester University students. Specifically freshmen, who have been asking us how they get a parking spot in the garage. Now, obviously, our preference is that our customers and the business community have access to our garage, but if Westchester University students. Those who would be living down at the campus and are just trying to find a place to warehouse their car are coming up to the garages. I think that is. Long-term, something we also want to see if we can address in some way.
Thank you.
I think the pricing of the parking is a mechanism that addresses that, too. The parking that the university sells is cheaper.
I just want to bring up a point I made earlier. You're assuming the next four months are going to be a return to normal?
I don't know what normal is anymore.
Okay, I'm just saying that, you know, with the rising cases, thinking that the next four months into the holidays are going to be. The way things are going to be moving forward, I think may not be the best frame to sample from.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Oh, okay. Item number sixteen. Approve the resolution to create a community campus coalition committee. Consent? Consent? Thank you. Consent for fifteen. Sixteen. Approve the resolution to create a community campus coalition committee of Borough Council. And authorize the solicitor to prepare, to prepare an ordinance. This is a. Initiative to. Just come up with more cooperation between the university, borough, students. Julie, do you want to? Yeah, tell us more about. Thanks for coming up. I saw your comments.
Try to make it. Julie Dietrich, the Executive Director for External Operations at Westchester University. So essentially, what we're asking to do is, we had a cohort of university and borough leaders to include residents and neighbors, students. So it was formerly the, again, more of an ad hoc community campus coalition. What we're asking here is to move the resolution forward, so that we have a more sustainable structure and leadership. As a standing committee of the borough.
Questions, comments?
There we go, okay. Sorry. Yeah, I wasn't able to be at the public safety meeting last week, so, but I'd like to give my two cents. I really think this is an excellent opportunity. For council and in the Westchester University and the community members to have something a little bit more solidified. I know this, this committee has kind of been off and on for the past few years, and I know that my constituents are, you know, in support of it, especially being in the fourth ward. Sometimes the most affected by the issues that are brought up. So I think this is a, just a great chance for us to solidify something. So that we can move forward, and I think that'll provide more opportunities and more solutions going forward, as opposed to sometimes meeting here and there. Something that's more standing and consistent, I think, is a great idea.
Actually, last week, when nurses presented, Dr. Dietrich and Mayor Norley presented this. And it's, it's a more all-encompassing thing than what we're talking about tonight. It seems that. Anywhere you could have some sort of better relations between various entities, it seems to be there, even with, you know. Landlords, neighborhoods, whatever. It's pretty complete. Take us a while to get all that together, but it, it. It just seems like a really good idea. I think it's workable.
Mr. Brison? Dr. Dietrich. Good evening. I love that. It's, you earned it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Pop-pop works for me, you know? So the, the committee, it would be a standing committee of the borough. That could bring solutions that council would vote on to be able to enact different. Ordinances and rules for the neighborhood down, down the fourth ward and on campus.
Well, I think it would enable that, right? I mean, so it would be beyond a more formal, casual. Or pending. In what? Specific people at the university and borough by way of having representation by specific areas or departments or offices from the university and the borough. So again, it would be a sustainable structure and.
Any comments or questions from people in the audience? Could you come on up, please? If you could give us your name and street address, please?
Nicole Shimoney. I live five oh five Keystone Alley in the fourth ward. So this is interesting. This is the first I've heard of it, and my question is, how is this committee being built? What's the structure and how people are being brought in to be part of this? Again, as a member of the fourth ward, this is the first I've heard of even the idea behind it, and. How would this idea get out to the community, so those who want to be involved can be?
Well, here, I think I can answer that question. The. We're going to ask for council to pick a date. To, or, and the solicitors who draft the ordinance that would create the committee. And once the committee is created, Borough Council would advertise on the website and newspaper for anyone who is interested to serve on the committee. And last week, we had some laundry list of different representatives would be represented. That's what the council will flush out during. This resolution and further, probably when you get the ordinance in front of you. So that's the process of how people can get engaged. So stay tuned. If you have any questions, feel free to call my office.
But just to add to that, in the past, Nicole, this committee, which wasn't a standing committee council, but there were community members who were part of it. I think Woody, I see Woody there, he was on it. I think as a public safety chair was on there, or maybe as a fourth ward representative, I don't know, but there's different people that were already part of it, but we'll probably flush that out as the ordinance is created and make that more solidified, yeah.
Yes, just to add on to that, that was part of the. This week, so there are specific departments, and we were trying. Already, the consistent practice with. And the university leadership would work.
Okay. Does that, does that answer your question? Okay. All right, thank you. So. Consent? All right, consent. Item number sixteen is consent. Do we have any other hearings next month? Could piggyback on?
See the drift?
All right. Yeah, that's good. Is that okay with you? All right. Mr. Gore has taken the stage. Smart growth issues. Item number seventeen, approve the resolution for the preliminary land development application from six eleven. East Neale Street LLC for the property located at six eleven East Neale Street. Famously known as the Wyeth property. Tax parcels number one dash ten dash eighty-three, number one dash ten dash two thirty-five.
Thank you. Billy, if you could pull up the plan. Mr. Mann's doing that. I'll run through the brief overview of the submission. The applicant is six eleven East Neale Street LLC. They're represented here this evening by Mr. Khan, Mr. Adams, and their legal counsel, Mr. Nagel. The application is for a one hundred and forty-two thousand square foot online retail distribution facility and associated parking facilities on that parcel. The application has been reviewed by all borough consultants and appropriate departments. And the applicant has submitted three plan revisions based on those reviews that were provided to the applicant. They are requesting seven waivers on the plan. Those waivers are related to parking lot landscaping, the islands, the parking lot layout and design, and stormwater management. All the consultants have supported those waivers, along with the planning commission. Made a favorable recommendation for the preliminary land development approval. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to several commitments related to the land development project that were discussed with the planning commission. And these, these conditions will be finalized throughout the final land development approval, which is the next step in this process here. The, those commitments are outlined in the resolution and all the conditions that the planning commission has recommended. I was hoping you would have the. Scroll, scroll down a little bit, Bill. We'll go to the, up, up. There you go. Councils, any questions for myself or the applicant here? Mr. Gore, Bernie Flynn. Mr. Khan, and. The, the islands are going to be electrified, correct, so that the delivery vehicles can deliver the materials? And they can charge overnight or charge when they need to come back to the facility?
Matt Adams with six eleven East Neale Street LLC. So as relates to the electric charging, you can see, if you can kind of scroll down on the. Southern parking lot. Sneal, yeah, if you could scroll down. Just to orient everyone, this is East Neale Street, south, south Balmar, running south Adams. Bulk of the van parking area will have electric vehicle conduit run to the spaces, and those will be running these areas, parking stalls. And essentially, it's just PVC piping that'll be essentially conduit. So as the vans arrive, I mean, there's. As they can. Essentially have a pull string to provide those spaces.
Yeah, the question came up after our meeting last week, was if the vans are not a hundred percent electric. Where would they be fueling the. Vans prior to them going out for delivery? Because we didn't see any gasoline pumps or, or. Storage tanks being, being used. And that came from one of the residents that was at the meeting, and I didn't have the answer, because I didn't see any gasoline, you know, any petrol pumps at all on site.
Yeah, that's correct. So there's no fueling station or planned fueling station for the site. So all of the individual drivers of their vans, which they'll drive in, park their personal vehicle, pick up a van and go out on their, you know, eight-hour route. Will fuel, you know, during that route, so off-site, one percent. So there's no fuel oil tanks or anything of that nature that's planned for the site at this time.
Question? Go ahead.
Matt, are there going to be any trees in the parking lot?
So we went through about three rounds with the planning commission as it relates to the parking lot area. And really, the ordinance, you know, a lot of ordinance is landscape islands, as far as, you know, the aesthetic of having a nice parking lot. Think of like a retail center where you'd have it. So landscape islands in the ordinance don't require. Trees in those island areas, given the operation and kind of the safety of the operation. So these spaces are actually a little bit bigger than a normal parking lot. So a typical space is nine by eighteen. These are eleven by twenty-seven, to fit essentially like a Sprinter van that you'd see delivering. So it's more of an operational parking lot. So we decided, you know, collectively with the recommendation of planning commission, to kind of take the landscaping that would be inside the parking lot. To put it on the outside. So we're actually installing, I think, a hundred and five additional trees to kind of screen the entire parking lot as you would drive by. Which includes the preservation of the trees along East Neale. So we're preserving a number of these that don't interfere with utility connections, and then a number of the willow oaks that run along South Adams. So the goal right now is to preserve as many of the existing trees along the street, and then you can see the buffering within. So a lot of the buffering on the outside perimeter. And along the north as well, where it abuts a residential unit and some other. Is there to essentially buffer. Effectively, and you can see the islands in the middle. So these do have, obviously, trees. It's just not every ten stalls. And the folks that are coming here are parking their car, leaving for the day and then coming back. So it's not like you have folks coming in here all the time throughout the day. It's not a high-use parking lot. So from an operational standpoint, that's why.
Any questions from the other members of council?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So this is one of those, I've been around a long time, comments. Going back fifteen years, I have always opposed. Residential on this property. So I want to say that I think this is best possible use of this property from all kinds of reasons. The problem with residential is Sartomer is across the street, a. Full-blown chemical company that had a major disaster. The memory of most people around, causing evacuations and suchlike. So I want to. Commend the company for finding a tenant. Doesn't need residential. It's an industrial area, and I think this is. An excellent use. I can't think of a better use. And. And it's aging.
You know how you have that white, that white sound music when you sleep? This could be, this could be your lullaby. Mr. Scott saying something positive. It's, it's a wonderful feeling.
I think this is the third time I've said something nice about the Khan properties. And if you play it at night, my droning will really put you to sleep. So I think that's a very good suggestion. I was a little snarky about this last week, saying that they didn't tear down any stark buildings to get to where they are. And I'm just real happy about all of it.
If I might, I've been going to remember the recent planning committing, planning commission meetings where they've been discussing, it's kind of a fascinating process where you're doing a deep dive into all the details that we might not be getting into from what you're seeing tonight. And I, just my observation with each meeting, no matter what question was asked, no matter what comment was made by anyone, the Khan organization immediate answer already been thought out. I was kind of amazed at that. Plus the thousands of decisions that you have to make for a project like this. And I was just, personal opinion, I was really impressed by the whole process. So support this very much, as people know. Just before we go on, anyone in the audience have a comment? Ms. Kornup?
I'm sure based on your comments, it's already been thought about, but regarding the traffic patterns that will, what, what is your estimation on the, the change in the traffic patterns? Is there going to be any, any adjustments to the current signage or directions on the, the streets that are around the building? How is that being thought about at this point in time?
Most of the traffic, just fill in whenever I, most of the traffic, like the trucks come, bringing products in will be coming in off Route 202. They will not be going through the borough. Vans will be going, when they're coming in, I don't believe they'll be going through the borough, but going out, yes, some are going to. That's, traffic study was done to address all these issues.
Yeah, Billy, if you can go back to that plan, the very first page, well, second or third page of the plan. Correct me if I'm wrong with anything, but the tractor trailer deliveries are going to be coming in, in the hours off peak. And they are expecting about 12 deliveries, tractor, tractor trailers? 21, yeah, come on up here. One thing we do want to point out though, is that the tractor trailers will not be going north on Balmar Street. They can only make a right-hand turn back down to 202 facility.
So this is in general, it's a last mile facility. Essentially, it's the throughput. So the product actually delivers, as Kevin said, 80% of it's coming overnight and that product is being delivered by the plan. Give you, give you an orientation. So you come off 202, you're heading northbound on West Town Road. You make the left on Autopark Boulevard, similar to the Aduwe pile trucks. You would make a right on South Balmar and continue through this truck court. So this is an isolated truck court. This is all, or your tractor trailers will deliver the product. Product comes in roughly one truck per hour overnight. Folks working in the building to offload that material, put it onto essentially a material handling system, big conveyor system, and it's stacked on essentially like a bakery cart. Bakery carts are then stacked for the next day. Out to the van. So the actual trucks will become overnight. It will be used BPS pulled by the prospective user. Right turn, excuse me, being northbound, South Balmar, taking a left into this truck court, back out. And there'll actually be a concrete island right here where my lady pointing in that truck court driveway to prevent a truck from making a left heading towards Market Street and that, and that Balmar intersection. All truck traffic will come in off of 202 and go out the same way. So they'll, you know, see down South Balmar, Autopark, back to West Town to change.
Could you, if you're going to ask questions, come on up, because this, we're recording this.
So thank you for the commentary on the trucks and, and understanding how they're going to flow and that there's probably eight or so that come in over each night. I, I did notice that there are 661 van parking stalls. So what is the estimation of the number of vans that are going to be going in and out of the facility and what streets are they going to be using? Was there any consideration regarding the current traffic flow and if we need to create new signage? I don't know, stoplights? I'm not even sure. But what's been the thought process behind those 661 vans that be going in and out?
Great question. So what you're seeing is 661 vans, but as far as the operation goes, just to kind of further elaborate. So once the line haul trucks come in and load up the facility, bakery carts, the actual van drivers will pull into this parking lot, park their personal vehicle. Half of what you're seeing are off to pickup. But once they pull into the parking lot, those folks come in around 9:30 in the morning. I think from a traffic perspective, peaks are usually seven to nine, eight rush hour and then four to six. These are off peaks. Actually, in our traffic study, including trip generation on top of the peak, ultra conservative. But right now, the plans for this facility and a lot of these similar facilities are these folks, the van drivers come in around 9:30, pick up their van, proceed their van into this staging area. So each one of these has about 24 vans in it. They kind of wait and they proceed underneath a canopy. So this is essentially just a covered canopy. It's a bunch of grade level doors on the side of the building, on the south side of the building. And then the material comes out, they load those vans, proceed out between 10 and 11 first as their van, depending on their route. So, you know, some, most likely it's going to go to Balmar, north to Market, south it could go. And depending on their routes for the day, drivers are then out for the entire day and they'll come back randomly. Each van might have between 100 packages, depending, some might be going to West Ocean, East Bradford, West. So, you know, again, it looks like a lot of van spaces, but ultimately it's only really about half of that.
Thank you.
I actually also have a question about the traffic pattern. I used to be a Lyft driver and so I used to drive people to Amazon distribution times all the time. And it was often at like 3 o'clock in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning. And so, I mean, how many people are going to be working in this facility at a time? I know they work like three shifts, right? So you're going to have people coming in and three shifts, coming and going, even if they don't park there, they still got to get there. So like, was that factored into the traffic?
Traffic study that we had prepared and that was reviewed by TPD, the Borough's Traffic Consultant, we actually went three rounds of comments with them. To Kyle's point, I mean, he knows it pretty well, but the biggest shift for the associates, which are the large 330 parking spaces that you see kind of to the northwest of the site, those, the largest shift is about 102 people and they come in at 1:30 in the morning. So they're really there working, coming into the low docks to unload, some material handling, put them in, load by parcel, by zip code, which bakery cart in the morning around, actually have the numbers. So at 5:30 in the morning, there's about 33 managers that are coming to kind of orchestrate the next day as far as making sure that everything's in order. When the van drivers do show up, and they show up around 9:30 in the morning, there's another 33 people factored. Happening over an hour and a half span each day. So it's, you know, they come in off peak, they're loading the vans, and then everybody's gone for the day and then they proceed to come back after, most of them are coming between 7 o'clock and 8 o'clock, kind of rush hour. But yes, the biggest.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Correct. I mean, I mean, Balmar's owned half by the borough and half by West Ocean. So southbound leg of that is owned by the borough and you see the northbound of West Ocean. That is correct. So we actually did, as part of the traffic study, Harrison matrix showing the 325,000 feet of pharmaceutical manufacturing that was there, kind of did a traffic study showing what the traffic impacts were from a line haul trucks and as well as vehicles. And then we also did a buy right plan, showed a distribution building, which you typically see Allentown, Carlisle, which you're seeing a lot more in urban infill areas, cross dock, your typical, similar like an Aduwe pile, which you see down the street, which would have roughly 150 dock doors. That had 330 truck trips per day compared to 42 here. So there's 21 trips, but you know, they count a trip in and a trip out. So that's two. So 42 versus 330 based on a buy right industrial plan. And I believe the trucks, you know, exceeded that as well for the, what was here previously as Wyeth Pharmaceuticals, which started in 1960. Not that we're aware of. I mean, one of the comments in the traffic is to make sure that we assess, you know, curbs, you know, and whatnot. We're actually installing a whole new sidewalk on the perimeter, but as far as the road condition, you know, we haven't noticed any, you know, issues to date.
Thank you. Anything else? Consent? Item number 16, oh, sorry, 17 goes on the consent agenda. We're going to move to smart growth issues. Item number 18, approve the July 2021 Harb certificate approvals. Item A, this is for Oz Bridle. Want to put up a new sign, which was approved, but the bracket was needed to be black instead of stainless steel. Otherwise it was approved. Can we just go through these quickly and then we can vote on them unblock? Okay. Item B is Chester County Legal Building at 26 South High Street. Want to repoint the brick on the front of the building, replacing wood trim. So post replacing windows on the second, third, second, third floors of the front facade with the windows. Harb had a number of recommendations about the material to be used for the windows and a few other things as you can read there. Again, so ultimately that was approved with those recommendations. Item number C, 17 West Minor, Chester County Legal Building. Yeah. They want to replace the metal roofing on the existing awnings or pent roof, repairing wood on the existing gable eve, also proposing new lights in the soffit, repointing the brick of the front facade, post repair of stucco vinyl windows. The recommendation was with some conditions, as you can see there. About the eve using beaded board, board, triangular ends of the panel vertically.
There's only three of those. All recommendations are lengthy, they're just pointing out the aesthetics and the material that they want to have used on those two projects.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by members of council or people attending the meeting? Consent? Okay. Item 18 will go on the consent agenda. Item number 19, schedule a public hearing on October 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM for the zoning ordinance update, planned university campus ordinance.
Yeah, that's me as well. Waiting on the county reviews to come back for these. Have to send out legal notices to the property owner for the university. So we decided to push it back to October just to give us a little bit of breathing room on getting those notices out. As the, as the regular meeting.
So that's, I don't guess anything we need to take action on then. Okay. Thank you. Next. Is there, is there something else? Yeah, we got to do that. That goes without saying.
Date going to work for council, that's the question.
I'm sorry?
Date of October 20th going to work for council, that's, that's the question.
So far in the future. Work for me.
Yeah, we just, we need to nail that date down because we have the advertisement and the seasons.
That's before a voting session, so should be.
Yeah, it's, it's the business session in October.
Okay. So we're good with that. Item number 20, schedule a public hearing to create pension plan committees for the West Chester Borough, non-uniform and West Chester Borough Police Pension Plans.
Be happy to help you. The, the Borough Council had, has approved a committee to manage the pension for the police and for the, the Public Works employees. We, we've put together a, a ordinance to be approved at a, at a public hearing. It's going to be a management team made up of residents and also the, a member from the police union and a, a member from the ASME union would be on the board. And this has been in the works for quite a while. And this is like one of those committees that we talked about earlier. We'll advertise for people to have the expertise in financial planning. And we'll be moving, you know, forward, managing our own plan and saving quite a bit of money doing that. It doesn't benefit the, the daily operations of, of the borough. What, what happens is the savings goes right back into the pension plan instead of going into the general fund. So it's a, it's a win-win for everybody instead of paying a management team. So we have to come up with a, a date, have the hearing, and then we can advertise for city members.
So any preference for a date? Just urgent, not urgent, striking? Is there a time component?
Sooner, sooner the better because we don't want to go into 2022 having two management teams. Then we have to advertise people that, that want to be on the committee, then they have to be vetted and the council has to do it. I would say sometime in September would be good.
Voting session in September?
Yeah, that's fine. I can't get my calendar fast enough. Okay. Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, that'd be good. Item. Unless there are any comments, members of the audience will move on to twenty-one. Prove the twenty twenty-one actuarial valuation assumption changes, number two, number three, and number four. Number two is lowering the interest rate assumptions seven to six point seven percent per year. Item three, lowering the salary increase assumption from four point five to four point two five per year. And four, updating the mortality assumption from the R P dash two thousand fourteen mortality table. A fifty percent blue collar adjustment and mortality improvement projected with rates derived from the long range. Demographic assumptions for the Social Security Administration's twenty thousand fifteen trustee report. To the pub G twenty-ten mortality table and mortality improvement projected from base year twenty fifteen. With rates derived from the long range demographic assumptions for the Social Security Administration's twenty twenty trustee report.
That sounds like a whole lot of worry that was done.
Can you read that again?
The the we we had two meetings. One, both people were from Machenhoff, the people that actually do our our assumption charts. And the mayor had some questions about some of the the interest rates and the and also the. Inflation rates that were occurring. So we had the president of. Of Machenhoff visit with us at our committee meeting. And she reviewed all these different aspects of it, and the committee actually changed to. Number two to number three and number four to reflect what we felt was a good good idea. This is a projection. If you look at amortization tables, this is something that goes out for years and years and years. So it's a it's a positive for the. The employee as well as the borough. Did I cover all that, Mr. Peron? Harb.
So we we did changes like this. We just discussed this last month. I remember this. Or is it the and then we've adjusted those those numbers, right?
Yeah, assumptions two, three, and four we kept.
Questions, comments? Any questions, comments, or people in the audience? Set. Okay, item twenty-one. On the consent agenda. Item number twenty-two, approve the budget modification to reallocate three hundred thousand dollars. For stream protection expense line items for final payment of John O. Green Park project.
Evening. Will Williams again. We're asking Borough Council to approve this budget modification for stream protection fee in twenty twenty-one. It's a three O recommendation from the committee last week, but given the number, it's a big number. We thought we'd provide more information this week and answer any questions. So I want to start by going back in time and talking about last year. We had two very large projects in stream protection fee. One was John O. Green Park. The other was Plum Run Restoration Stream Restoration Project. When COVID hit last year, both of them were went to a dead stop for several months while we were in lockdown. Late spring, early summer last year, and then. Had, you know, labor and material issues like everyone else in the world trying to get things going again last year. So both of those projects bled into twenty twenty-one calendar year. Plum Run was finished earlier this year, a huge project completed under budget. And. John O. Green at the moment is about ninety-nine percent complete. We have a punch list with the contractor. In the meantime, they've submitted invoices for final payment. We also have invoices for Pinoni, who's the engineering project manager on that project outstanding. So we have money in the bank for the project. We fully anticipated completing it in this year as soon as COVID hit, and and we realized the extent of of the lockdowns. Other revenue to complete these projects this year was carried over, but we failed to create a line item to bill to. So that's why we're asking for a budget modification. We need to create the line item and fund it by cutting other line items in this year's budget to create that money. So here's a summary of these. I'm I'm going to just spend a minute on each of them. But first and foremost, the first item is operating budget. That's an ongoing expense. The second two are capital items. This is a slide from my capital budget presentation, which I gave last week. As you can see, both the capital items that are being discussed tonight, that the budgets are being cut for this year. Are allocated for. We have budget allocations for them to complete the projects or continue the projects next year. So nothing is not getting done. Just one project has changed in scope and another one is being pushed back a little bit. So again, I mentioned the the first item is stormwater facilities management. That's an operating item. That's ongoing costs. Minor repairs, non-emergency things, maintenance to elements of our M S four rain garden maintenance, things like that. This work is typically backloaded towards the end of the year, but at this point, we're already in middle of August, and we are underspent on that line item, which is a good thing. And we feel comfortable cutting it by twenty thousand dollars at this point. The next project is Linden Frank. The this is Franklin Street at Linden. Culvert and Bridge. This time last year, when we budgeted the cost for this project, we were under the impression that the entire bridge needed to be replaced. Which is very expensive, long-term proposition. We were projecting over a million dollars cost to replace that bridge. This year, we brought in our engineers to take a better look at that. Having them out on site, having them done surveys, their professional opinion is that we do not need to replace the bridge. The bridge is in need of significant repairs. This handles a lot of stormwater in Goose Creek when we get severe precipitation events. And that road is thirty feet wide, and in the distance of that thirty feet, the creek takes two forty-five degree bends and makes a right angle. Her distance of thirty feet. Sure doesn't like forty-five degree angles, ninety-degree angles. Streams like to bend slowly and gently and in a natural curve. And so we need to fix this bridge, fix the stream bed underneath, soften the course so that when we have big stormwater events. It's not hitting a forty-five degree angle and deteriorating the bridge as quickly as it is now. So this is good news. Again, we thought we were going to have to replace a bridge over a million dollars. We now think we have to spend half, maybe less than half, to do this project. And accordingly, when you. We also have to spend less on engineering. Engineering, a bridge replacement versus repairs, totally different thing. So again, we were able to cut dramatically from this budget without delaying the project or really changing the end product, which is a nice new bridge that handles stormwater well. The last project is Washington Street and Hanum Avenue. This is a really tricky part of the borough in terms of stormwater. Washington Street used to be a stream. I know because I live a block north of it, and some of that stream originated in my basement for a very expensive basement waterproofing project. Over the last century or so, we have bricked over this stream. We piped it. It goes north into the park and then across the Elks Lot there. And that brick stream and the inlets that feed into it do not really handle the stormwater that we're getting at this intersection now. So this project is a collection of new inlets around that intersection, running north perpendicular to the street. Dumping into the Hanum Tributary of Taylor Creek. This was a very ambitious project to fit into a calendar year. New outfalls require D E P to get involved. Work to three twenty-two will involve Pendot. So we we got very ambitious trying to fit this into a calendar year. And our new plan is to do the survey, design, engineering, bid it out this year, and the work will be completed next year. So that's really the only project that has a significant slide in timeline, but then I think that's. More because we were overly ambitious about the timeline. Conveniently, that frees up the rest of the money we need to create the three hundred thousand dollar line item to close out John O. Green Park.
Comments, questions? Any comments, questions from the?
This is just on the three.
Correct.
Being asked to approve. Make a decision.
Set.
Yes.
Set. Okay, thank you. Your business?
Yes, Mr. Brace and Bernie Flynn, Chairman of the Finance and Revenue Committee. This morning, we had a very in-depth presentation of our twenty preliminary twenty twenty-two budget by the administration in the Borough of Westchester. All the department heads were present to ask any questions. We reached out to them to ask them their opinions on what the how the budget was stacking up. And we came to a very strong conclusion. That the finance committee has come to a very strong conclusion that our revenue is not sufficient. For twenty twenty-two to carry our expenses. There are some very serious situations that we have to discuss as a council, and the committee didn't feel. It their their position to make that decision. They want to bring it completely to council because it's going to be. A belt tightening or some other other options that the administration is going to provide for us. It's very easy to understand. When we don't have the money, our expenses can't carry it. So we have to set. We would like to set a date next week or the week after to have a full council special meeting. So council can make a decision. Moving forward into twenty twenty-two on how to set the. The finances for the borough. As Ms. Leonti said in our presentation last Wednesday, it's ugly. It's it's ugly. So unfortunately, we're going to have to bite the bullet one year or, you know. Or just keep kicking the can down the road. So it's that meeting is very important.
Thank you.
Just just to maybe. Add a little bit more to that. Borough administration, we're going to be meeting with the Financial Ad hoc Committee Subcommittee of our budget. Next on the twenty-fifth. We have a night meeting here six thirty. So if council is going to have a meeting, I would suggest you have it after that date. Maybe the Financial Advisory Committee would like to weigh in on suggestions they may have. Budget also. Did you offer a date?
So we set that we set the date after that meeting. That's what I meant.
Yeah, it's Ms. Dorsey and Mr. Stefano. It's, you know. Say it's up to you guys to pick a date, you know, pick a time when you're available because you're back in school and, Ms. Dorsey, you're working. This one will have to be in the evening instead of at nighttime. So everybody can intend that it's actually working because the insight of. Counsel is very, very important.
My suggestion.
Well, they're meeting with the ad hoc committee on the twenty-fifth. So we, Mr. Peron suggested we meet after that. So the twenty-fifth is a Wednesday. Why don't we meet on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, and Eric's also here from the the committee. So yes, we're going to meet the on the twenty-fifth. We're meeting internally as a committee before that to discuss. So. Is is the thought that you'd like the committee also at the meeting with the the Borough Council after the twenty-fifth? It it'll be tight. I mean, we're trying to coordinate something to to look at the information that I was able to hear this morning, but the rest of the team still needs to catch up on. We're trying to coordinate something before the twenty-fifth so we can meet internally, but that's also a little tight. Some people are on vacation and things like that. So yeah, it might be good to have at least like a week or something so that we can take all the information back and have a moment and to look through it and provide some real. Ideas.
That's Labor Day weekend. A lot of people will be on vacation, right?
Yeah, the weekend of thirty, August thirtieth.
Yeah, or that that week, the thirty-first or the first? No. Yeah, can we decide on the thirty-first or the first? Mine?
What time? There's a diversity task force meeting. Four?
The earliest for me would be five thirty.
Okay. It's fine. First works for me as well. It works for me as well.
It's a holy day. It's my birthday. That's why it's a holy day.
I thought your birthday was last week, didn't it?
No, that's that's when I turned sixty-nine. I turn seventy next week.
It seems like your birthday happens a lot.
So we're going to go September the first at six o'clock in Chambers, and we'll we'll have the review from the ad hoc committee. And then full council can hear the presentation from and suggestions from administration. Mr. Peron, first work? There you go. Thank you. That's that's a little help. Thank you.
We'll bring cake for you.
Thank you.
Balloon.
Thank you. One last thing, Mr. Mr. Brace. I just want to bring attention to. To to the committee and and to the residents of the borough. Out out in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the House of Representatives. There's a House Bill seven thirty-four, which is sitting in committee. Which I strongly support. What what this this bill does, and I'll bring you more information next time we meet, is that any resident in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. next time we meet, is that any resident in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that's 65 years old and has resided in their property over five years, their property tax will be froze from that point on, like they do quite a bit down in Delaware, some other states around the country. It's been sitting in committee for quite a while since February. The Democrats have brought this to the attention of the Republican House. And hopefully, we could, we could send a resolution saying that we support it for our senior citizens in the borough. But I'll bring you more information in the next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item number. Any more, any other business? Item number A, under 23, approve the July 20, 2021 and July 2021, 21. Borough Council meeting minutes. They were primed with name. Set? Last item. What?
We did that, we did that first.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah, it seems that way, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Might be the first time ever.
So, Chrissy, Chrissy Holley, I have a representative here to speak to council, give you an update on what her office has been doing. Then there's an executive session scheduled shortly after the council meeting is adjourned.
Wait, tomorrow?
Anything else? I'm supposed to say, we're adjourned.